Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you tonight to the City of Oxford Board of Commissioners's regular monthly meeting. Today is Tuesday, February 15th. I hope everybody had a great Valentine's Day yesterday. It is 2022 and it is 7:01 PM and we are assembled here in the Commissioners' Boardroom of City Hall. And with that, I will read that the mission of the City of Oxford is to serve and improve our community by providing high-quality, affordable services, sound planning for growth and development, and offering the highest possible quality of life while maintaining the public's trust through open communication and ethical standards at all times. If you do have a cellphone or other electronic device, we ask that you mute it or turn it off at this time. And I would now like, for those who are so inclined, to invite student pastor Joseph Hart of West Oxford Baptist Church to come to the podium and open our meeting again, for those who wish to join us to open our meeting in prayer.
Good evening, and thank you all for having me tonight. Let us pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for this night. God, I thank you for this open, free country, God, that you have blessed us in allowing us to live here where we can openly come before you tonight and pray to you openly and worship freely in our country. Father God, I just want to thank you for your salvation through your Son Jesus, who you offer to all, Lord, by grace alone through faith alone in Jesus Christ. Lord, we thank you for your forgiveness, for the salvation you bring us through your Son Jesus. And, Lord, I just pray that for everyone here tonight would come to know you. But dear Lord, I just want to pray for this meeting. We pray for our city. We pray for our leaders, for our commissioners, for our mayor, and just each and every single person, Lord, throughout the City of Oxford and our great county and our great state and country. Lord, that this would all just go well. We pray for our people. We pray that everything would be run well and run smoothly. And we just pray that you would help us all and lead and guide us in this place and in this world. We love you, and we thank you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much, Pastor. And with this, Commissioner Brian Kahn will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
... to the Senate of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You all may be seated. At this time, we'll consider adjustments to and approval of the agenda. We have one item that is already has been included, and that is to consider adding the 2022 concessionaire contract for the Oxford Park Athletic Complex. And that has been, as I mentioned, added to the agenda after the consent agenda on item six, and the attachment has been added as well. And further, there has been placed at your seat an item, and I'm going to -- it is entitled Resolution Authorizing Condemnation Proceedings. And so I would like to ask Attorney Burnett to briefly tell us what this is about for you to consider.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This, as you know, we're -- we have undertaken to do a tremendous amount of water, city water, water and sewer projects. In order to do that, generally, we need to get permission from property owners to go on their property to do the work. Ninety percent of the time, the property owners agree to do that without us having to do anything. They file, they will sign the easement documents that we give them. A lot of times, the work is within the state right-of-way of the roads. In the event we're not able to get their permission, we have to start condemnation proceedings. Most of the time, after we do that, we're able to get it resolved. But in any event, we need to get access to these properties because the work's starting, it's getting ready to start within the next 90 days, I think. There's a list of them on the Attachment A, and this is just to get your authority for us to start this process.
Okay. So we'll add that on, and Madam Clerk, I will ask you to help me remember when we get to the end of the agenda, or we'll ask the Board for permission. Thank you for your explanation. So with that, Board, you have two items to consider. This presented, the condemnation proceedings presented by Attorney Burnett, and adding the concessionaire contracts for the Oxford Park Athletic Complex. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tovey. Any discussion? The agenda stands adopted with the addition of those two items. Thank you very much. In order to provide the highest standards of behavior and transparency and governance, our Board has approved a Code of Ethics to establish guidelines for ethical standards for ourselves and to provide guidance in determining appropriate conduct, among those that we should avoid impropriety in the exercise of our official duties and should conduct the affairs of the Board in an open and public manner. I now inquire whether any Board member knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of such with respect to any matters before the Board tonight. If you do know of a conflict of interest or appearance of such, please state so at this time. Let the record note, no conflicts. At this time, we have our public comment period, and we do not have anybody signed up to speak. So we will move forward to the public hearing portion of the agenda, and at this time, we also do not have any public hearings scheduled. So we move forward to our delegation portion, and I have learned we were going to present the Morgan Ren Employee of the Month Award to our dear Fire Chief David Cotrell, but apparently he's already been presented with that award earlier by the city. And so I would just like to let everybody know that our esteemed Fire Chief David Cotrell is our Morgan Ren Employee of the Month, and ask that you all give him a round of applause. Thank you so much, Chief Cotrell. With this, we proceed forward to item five, which is City Business. And A on that item is to consider calling for a public hearing to hear citizen input on our request from Granville County ABC Board for a text amendment from Section 2.4.3 of the permitted use table of the UDO to allow ABC stores in the central business district as a permitted use with standards. Currently, the applicant is requesting a text amendment to provide in addition to the existing building. The old zoning ordinance established in 2003 allowed ABC stores to be permitted in the central business district. However, the new UDO does not allow this. As such, the applicant is proposing some stringent standards that align with the development of the central business district, and you have information there too in Attachment 5A. The Staff and Planning Board recommend calling for a public hearing on Tuesday, March 15th, 2022, at the regular Board meeting. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tovey. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Madam Mayor, I have some concerns regarding the language of the proposed amendment to the UDO. Specifically, if I can draw your attention to Exhibit A in our packet, essentially what is being asked, and I certainly agree with, that we need to rectify and allow for the -- allow for the permitted use of having the ABC store in the downtown central, in the central business district. However, I do disagree with the language, a designation of permitted with standards. So for context, we have permitted, permitted without, or permitted with standards, and ultimately several others which would bar it from being there. In looking into this this week and kind of trying to understand the nature of this language and why we want to make a lengthy edit to our UDO, I believe it would suffice to just have this permitted with a designation of permitted. Two points to that, and I will, I won't belabor the point, but specifically, this language is redundant in respect to North Carolina General Statute, Chapter 18, Section B, Section 108, which expressly gives the ABC Commission of North Carolina very aggressive control, let's put it that way, of how the sale of packaged beverages are handled in the State of North Carolina, meaning that the independent, or not independent, but the state ABC boards, or the county ABC boards, rather, are granted one retail location, and any additional retail location has to go through a stringent approval process, to which the location of that specific store in relation to other stores that may be nearby, including others in other jurisdictions, are all taken into account and factored in, along with the health and well-being of the citizens in that area, and any specific building guidelines and development ordinances that may be applicable. Given that the state has such high standards and it's well-written, well-thought-out, there really is no reason for adding Section 3.5.12 to our UDO, and simply leaving it as permitted would be more than sufficient. I do believe that it's best practice, whatever we have guidance like a UDO, that we, it's best to leave that as intact as possible. I don't think that adding amendments that are specific to one entity in one case is really the spirit and design of a UDO. That being said, I did take, dig a little bit further just to see if we have any partners in the state or nearby where such language and permitting exists. And to my knowledge, having looked at approximately 13 to 14 different municipalities across the State of North Carolina, I cannot find a single example of similar language. This includes Durham, Raleigh, Wake Forest, Henderson, Greensboro, Creedmore, and Charlotte, to name a few. And again, there is, they're either permitted, or they are not permitted. Matter of fact, most municipalities just lump them in with general retail, and all applicable guidance would apply to all retail. So it's generally not treated in such a fashion. So I think it would be prudent that this language be amended to just simply say permitted. It would bring it in line with the rest of the table. Again, Section 2.4.3, the permitted use table, which is outlined in Exhibit A. The other areas of the city where an ABC store would be permitted are indicated as permitted, not permitted with standards. So consistency and simplicity would, I think, in a little bit of common sense, make sense to just have this as permitted.
Okay. Thank you. And I will have to ask our Planning Director Hart about this further, but I do want to ask, because I know Commissioner Bridges was also, had something he wanted to bring up. Commissioner Bridges, do you want to bring up your question now?
Yeah, real short. I just wondered why the acreage requirement and the parking requirement. I was just wondering what the rationale is behind there having to be a certain acreage in, it's .65 acres, and then 12 parking spaces. I just wondered, is there something significant about 12 parking spaces and that much acreage?
Ms. Hart?
I don't think there's anything significant about it. When Attorney Breen drew this up, he wanted to, as I mentioned before, he wanted to do it in such a way that gives the concern, and I think it was intentional, out of the rule of, that gives the concern of having that type of establishment there. I think he wanted to draw up something where it would be aligned in a similar, that would be relevant to that location.
So in essence, as I understand it, for Commissioner Bridges, the specificity of it being a corner lot and the acreage and the parking spots was to essentially make it specific to that location and no other location. But what I'm understanding from Commissioner Kahn is that because of the overarching guidance from the state and the size of our very small central business district, there is already guidance that would make it highly unlikely for another one to be located within walking distance of the one we currently have. And of course, our central business district is all within walking distance. And then further, of course, we have guidance in the UDO already about parking and so on and so forth. So does that answer your question, Commissioner Bridges?
Yes.
Excellent. Does anybody have, let me go to Ms. Hart. If the Board were to entertain Commissioner Kahn's suggestion, would then, so obviously the item tonight was to just set up a public hearing for the March meeting, which we can still vote on. But if the Board were interested in entertaining Commissioner's suggestion, is the next step to take it back to the Planning Board at their meeting at the end of the month since the recommendation came from the Planning, in addition to the applicant, of course?
Right. I think it would be a lot easier to restate the practice, or to go back to the Planning Board, or we could still call for the public hearing to, for it to be considered.
Okay. And if the Planning Board approved the new approach of just permitting it, is that sufficient public notice time for the public hearing in March so that nothing has to be delayed?
Yeah, so we have time down to go here and advertise for the March 15th meeting.
Okay.
And I think Attorney Breen was okay with that being permitted as well.
Okay. Excellent. So with that, yes, Commissioner Gilreath?
But I thought it was going to go back to the Planning Board before it became public.
The Planning Board's meeting is at the end of this month.
February the 28th, so we have enough time.
So then there's... So then, I asked my colleagues, what is your inclination with respect to what Commissioner Kahn is proposing? Yes, sir, Commissioner Bullock?
I agree with him primarily for the comments that have been made, but the one thing that struck me was that how this writing focused on one specific site as opposed to general intent in the UDO and all this, for more general rules that can be applied.
Thank you. Yes, anybody else?
No, I think that would be my concern, is that if we leave that out, it leaves it open to anybody wanting to do something similar in the downtown area. So if we've got standards, then that would put the onus on anybody applying in future. This is just for the store, right, the ABC store. It's not for any future development.
Correct. But what Commissioner Kahn is saying is that the standards that come from the State of North Carolina...
Are greater than ours.
Are sufficiently stringent that they would not allow an ABC store to be located probably anywhere else in our central business district because of the walkability. They like them separated, so they're not competing within another. So that Commissioner Kahn's point is that adding these standards actually is kind of redundant.
Yeah.
It's a, you would accomplish something that's already being accomplished by the ABC, the state ABC Board. Do I understand that correctly, Commissioner?
It would. And to provide some additional context and ease, if anybody's concerned about somebody opening a packaged beverage store downtown, one, it's expressly prohibited. Only the State of North Carolina can do that. And just looking at how close they go together, I looked at Mecklenburg County, specifically downtown Charlotte, and within a 40-mile radius, if you take the central core of downtown Charlotte, there is only seven, approximately seven ABC locations in a 40-square-mile area that represents 100,000 people conservatively. And for reference, Oxford is 6.25 square miles in total.
Not the central business district is probably like two towns.
Totality of our entire town is significantly smaller. So I think the guidance that they provide and the way that they manage it is extremely responsible, and there's no reason to reinvent the wheel.
Point taken.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Well taken.
Excuse me?
In agreement.
Okay. So with that, we can have consensus to ask Ms. Hart, do we need a separate vote on that? Mr. Thornton or Mr. Attorney, do we need to have a separate vote to send it back? Or are we good with the Board on consensus and just the vote on calling for a public hearing in March?
Well, I think you can call for the public hearing, but you also need to vote to send it back to the Planning Board, if that's what you want to do.
There you go. Okay. So who made the original motion?
It was me. So a motion.
I'm sorry.
Yes, I motioned to send it back to the Planning Board.
Okay. So Commissioner Tovey, are you interested in adjusting your motion, or shall we go ahead and...
I'll adjust the motion, and I'll yield to Commissioner Kahn's motion.
Okay. So...
I'll withdraw the motion.
Well, you don't have to withdraw it, because you made a motion to go ahead and call for the public hearing in the March meeting. So we will just, but you're in agreement to add to it that we send it as a simple permitted use to the Planning Board on the February 28th meeting?
Yes.
Yes?
Simple permitted use.
Okay. Any further comments before we vote? All in favor, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign? Excellent. That motion carries. Thank you all very much for that interesting discussion. And with that, we go to item 5B, which is to consider authorizing the City Clerk to investigate the petition sufficiency for the non-contiguous annexation request on behalf of CABLLC for 76.29 plus or minus acres located off the Outer Loop and Landis Road, and calling for a public hearing to hear citizen input on the rezoning request regarding of said property for the March 15th regular Board meeting. And with that, well, I guess I'll read through this, and then we'll invite Ms. Hart to come forward and make a presentation. The petitioner is going through the process of having the property rezoned for conditional rezoning for residential development, GR10, up to six dwelling units per acre. Currently, the property is zoned residential agriculture. The GR10 conditional use allows voluntarily added conditions by the applicant. The applicant proposes prohibiting multifamily dwelling units and limiting the development to only six units per acre or 457 total dwelling units. The comprehensive plan shows that the property is mixed-use. The applicant previously submitted a rezoning of the property from RA to GR10, which would have allowed up to 10 dwelling units per acre or 760 total units. Instead, the applicant proposes a development that would limit the development to six dwelling units per acre or 457 units. The applicant is also proposing that multifamily dwelling units be prohibited. Currently, 37.7 acres fall within the City of Oxford ETJ, and the remaining fall in Granville County's jurisdiction. Therefore, the petitioner will be seeking water and sewer for the property, and you have support information with multiple maps in Attachment 5B. And I would now like to invite our Planning Director Cheryl Hart to come forward.
So this is a request from CABLLC.
You may need to cut it on, Cheryl. End it here.
So this is a request for a conditional rezoning and annexation of 76.29 acres. This request previously came before the Board for a regular rezoning and annexation, changing the zoning from RA, which is one dwelling unit per acre, to GR10, which would allow 10 dwelling units per acre. That was done in August. Their concerns about the board with the rezoning of property was such how distant it was from one dwelling unit per acre to 10. And so the applicant withdrew the request, come back with a conditional rezoning, which conditions are voluntarily added in order to provide for orderly and flexible development without the constructs of rezoning of each property and allowing whatever fall-to-recht district as a permitted use. GR10 is the only zoning district allowing townhomes. The applicant is proposing to cap the disdevelopment, you heard this in the staff report, to six dwelling units per acre, limiting the dwelling units to 457 as opposed to the 76 dwelling units for the regular residential development. The proposed development will have 108 single-family homes and 218 townhomes. The property is 0.6 miles from the corporate center. The current comprehensive plan shows the property as mixed-use. Mixed-use areas, designated growth areas, which allow for a variety of land use options, which includes multi- and single-family residential development with integrated retail Now, these are the development standards for mixed-use. They are access to arterial and collector streets, available public water and sewer, suitable soils and site conditions, direct access to major arterial and collector streets, internal recreational facilities and residential developments, protecting buffers between residential areas, pedestrian linkage between adjacent developments and landscaping standards. The Planning Board recommends approval of the conditional rezoning from RA to GR10, conditional use district. That is, January or even... Here's the land map. It's here, and I'm zooming in, where the property is located and showed as mixed-use. This is a conceptual layout of the property. So the request for, and this is... So looking at before you, there's a request for all the Department of Health for conditional rezoning. There's some recommendations. Any questions?
Yes, Commissioner Gilreath?
The applicant proposes prohibiting multifamily dwelling units. What is their definition of multifamily dwelling units?
What is their definition?
I mean, what are they prohibiting? Exactly. I'm just, describe what...
Yeah, so what they're proposing is townhomes and single-family homes, not apartment units. So multifamily would be the apartment unit.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Bridges?
So the essential change is, instead of 10 units per acre, they are proposing six units per acre.
That's one of them, and then they're highlighting that there will not be apartments. There were only singles. And then they further provide a conceptual drawing of what they have these two years.
And just a follow-up question, I don't know, the manager or others can chime in on this. Is there any real concern about us being able to provide water and sewer to this location?
Not the ability to provide it there. There is water available on the Outer Loop. If we're talking about allocation, then that's another question. Currently, we have adequate allocation as going forward, that we start having questions and concerns about allocation and the Carlake Regional Water Systems Water Treatment Plant project moving forward. Currently, there is adequate water supply to this property via the Outer Loop.
Further questions? Yes, Mayor Proton? Okay, further questions? Yes, Mayor Proton.
Oh, my goodness, ma'am. Now, this is geographically located off Selamong or?
Lambus.
Lambus.
Lambus, yes, ma'am.
I can actually, if you give me a minute.
Commissioner, if you have the green, it probably looks a little bit better.
And I can show you here. It's this outline right there. So, these are the two road sections.
This is the loop.
So, this is the outer loop. See here? This is the outer loop. And that's that piece of the outer loop right here. And this is Landis Road right there.
This is the Blue Ox River. Where, like Marion Lane. To Marion Lane.
Yeah, Marion Lane. So, here, this is the Tabs Creek Road there. This is Marion Lane right here. See? And that, you're laying in this, yeah.
I got it. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Bridges brought up water allocation. And I just thought about, we've got so many developments. And did I understand somebody to say at one of our previous meetings that Oxford Park was going for?
That's yet to be determined.
Okay.
That is yet to be determined, but they desire to. There are still some issues associated with that.
If they go for it, will we have enough to furnish them and here?
Without tying me down, I believe yes.
Okay, I don't want to tie you down.
But we still, you know, the biggest question going into the future is the project moving forward with Carlake Regional Water System.
Okay.
And there has been some movement on that. And we believe that it will go forward. But, you know, until such time as they technically start breaking ground and put it under construction, we'll continue to have that concern.
But would it be reasonable to say, in the instance of the concern that you're raising, that, for lack of a better way to say it, they were here first? In the sense that, you know, they're here and ready to go with their proposal. So, with respect to the water, and what the manager says is that there is water now currently to allocate to this. Am I correct in?
Let's go around. You're putting it simpler than probably I did. We always closely scrutinize the allocation that we have available as we go forward in dealing with these developments. And developments are largely speculative until such time as they get to even to this point.
Yeah, okay.
Does that answer your questions? Further questions?
Yeah, I have a follow-up question.
And then Commissioner Toby? No, no, you go, you go.
Yeah, I just, it seems to me, because, you know, I was on this board back in two thousand two, two thousand three, when Oxford Park was basically a dream. And it was a hope by individuals that they would be able to develop that land over in that area. And so, as I think about, Oxford Park has been developing and been around for close to twenty years. And if they are going, and it is my understanding that they're going to be doing some additional development. And it seems to me that they would have priority when it comes to the issue of water and sewer, since in many ways Oxford Park is kind of the crown jewel of Oxford. Because we didn't have anything like that until they began that development. And it just, if they're going to be issues of allocation of water and sewer, in my mind, they should get priority. And I, I mean, I'm not, it just seems to me, you know, when you have a partnership with someone for so many years, that you stick with that commitment. And that's just my feeling.
Commissioner Toby?
Just a couple of observations. I think everybody knows I'm all for growth. I like growth. I got a couple, and I'm sure it'll come out in any public hearing, about traffic impact study. I mean, the amount of traffic that's going to be going through there. And also, a lot, a lot of people think about it, is the construction traffic. How will it impact the local neighborhoods? I'm hoping it won't impact the local neighborhoods, you know. So, that, I'm sure that's going to come out at any public hearing. But I just wanted to put it out in people's minds that it's a concern.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions down this end? Mr. Thornton, do you have anything further to say about the water?
No, not currently, not currently. I mean, there's a lot entwined in this conversation. And I think we spent six hours or so, weekend before last, talking about utilities and where those projects are and where they need to go and a number of other things. But there is water currently available. That was the question that was asked. Is there water available? Yes, there are utilities available to that site via the outer loop. Can we accommodate that growth? Yes, they are in line and they are here at this point and have gone through the process of submitting plans and requesting annexation and doing all the things that they need to do to, as you stated, get in line. And we can accommodate them. We don't make promises at this point in time for those that are coming in speculatively saying that we are looking at this piece of property or we are looking at that piece of property. As they get more entwined with the city and going through this process that CAB is in, then we get a little bit more serious in looking and talking about allocation and availability.
Thank you very much. I'm going to do Commissioner Bullock and then Commissioner Gilreath.
I was just going to say pretty much the same thing, the city manager. In that, right now, we have the water. Part of the concern we've been talking about is looking ahead. As continuing requirements come in, we'll start reaching that limit. But we're in good shape now.
And I think there isn't a single person on this board that doesn't recognize the importance of our proceeding with the Carlake Regional Water System plant renovation and expansion so that nobody will have to be turned down on the basis of water.
So, yes, Commissioner Gilreath?
With regards to the multifamily dwelling units, is Jake Ridge one of our larger ones that we currently have?
They're one of our last ones built. I think maybe the larger one could be Cornell Buildings, but not that Autumn Park.
Yeah, Autumn Park. How could I forget about Autumn Park? Okay. Okay. Do we have any multifamily dwellings? Are any of those in the plans? Future plans of anybody that's coming down the park?
I'm not seeing it before they go.
Hatcher Creek is proposing apartments.
What's that?
Hatcher Creek?
Oh, okay, yes.
And I think they have probably, it's at least a hundred and eighty-eight apartments, I think, there. Is that?
I can't remember the exact number, but that sounds right in the ballpark.
And they are, are they doing the apartments or the townhomes first?
I think they were going to do townhomes first, if I recall.
And then apartments?
They did apartments.
Commissioner Gilreath, are you good or do you have further questions?
No, I am, I am, I'm good.
Okay, then Commissioner Bullock?
I make a motion that we allow the city clerk to check that out and call for a public hearing in that meeting.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? And that motion carries unanimously. I do have a question, which is, this motion is to, this public hearing is to hear both on the rezoning and the annexation? Or just the annexation?
Both.
Both?
This is the rezoning and we continue the process for annexation.
Okay. And I would like to just suggest, for clarity's sake, that in the next month's agenda, that when we do the vote, we separate that out. And that, and that the narrative, that we just make it a little bit clearer. We're going to, we are going to hear comments on annexation and we're going to hear comments on the rezoning so that everybody is straight and everybody has an opportunity to speak clearly on one or the other or both. And that when we take the vote, that the vote is separate.
You could get two separate steps before.
We will do that.
Okay.
You're going to be holding a public hearing on the rezoning question. Sufficiency question will be something that the clerk will determine and provide that information to you as far as finding sufficiency.
Right. So, we're only, but we're not, so then we're not doing, she's going to do this efficiency, but if there is a public hearing, we are not going to be doing a vote on annexation?
You will be holding that public hearing and then potentially voting.
Right. So, we want to?
Two.
Yeah.
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Ms. Hart, thank you so much for your presentation and colleagues for interesting discussion and questions. At this time, we'll go forward to item C, which is to consider authorizing Planning Director Cheryl Hart to submit an RFP to update the comprehensive land use plan. With the large volume of new development requests, it is necessary to update the comprehensive land use plan. The current comprehensive plan was adopted in two thousand nine, which is now outdated. As part of the planning for future growth, it is required that the comprehensive plan be updated to provide orderly growth. The estimated timeframe for completing this is six months at a minimum. And you have support information, colleagues in attachment 5C. The recommended action is that staff recommends moving forward with submitting an RFP to update the comprehensive land use plan. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bridges. Any discussion?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hart, do you think, is there, would there be any impact to projects that are currently in flight that may be dependent upon this type of land use? I'm just curious in terms operationally, does this impact anything that's currently in the works? Or, you know, is this predicated on anything, you know, being done first, I suppose? I'm just curious, more or less, is it, is it in any way going to impact anything that is currently happening or will be happening?
I don't think with the projects that we have coming up, I think we have, you won't see a lot of changes based on what we already have.
Gotcha.
Can I?
Yes, sir.
Add a question. I think the reason we want an RFP is the fact that we want to go ahead as soon as possible.
Sure.
We don't want to delay any, you know, possible investors coming in. So, if we can do this quickly, rather than go through the other with an RFQ and then wait another couple of months and get an RFP.
Yep.
So, if we get the purchase order now, we can just carry on.
Makes complete sense.
It makes sense, too.
I agree with a hundred percent. I was just curious if there was any, if there was any impact in this RFP process that would be coming again. Doesn't sound like there will be, so.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. And my only comment is to thank you for your work on this and pulling it together so clearly. It's exciting. With that, yes, did you have a question, Commissioner? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. And Ms. Hart, I do realize that I had an additional question. It doesn't affect the vote on the previous item, but I don't want to forget it. The comment was made in the presentation that GR-10 is the only, the reason they asked for the GR-10 designation was because that's the only designation that we currently have in the UDO that allows townhomes. Is it reasonable to consider doing an amendment to our UDO that would allow townhomes in the conservation development approach where they are required, you know, we allow folks to do increased density and in exchange for greater open space, which I believe they had also committed to doing more open space?
I want to say yes, but let's have some more conversations with the community.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Okay, continuing on to item D. Consider authorizing the city manager and staff to finalize a task order with CDM Smith Incorporated for a not-to-exceed amount of six hundred and thirty thousand dollars in order to proceed with the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation. Project construction, oh, I think I, rehabilitation project construction and consider adopting a revised resolution and capital project ordinance that aligns with the new funding numbers. CDM Smith Incorporated has produced ninety percent of construction plan specifications and estimates and has submitted them to the permitting and funding agencies for approval. The next step is bidding and construction. The current task order includes bidding, but not construction administration. The estimate based on today's construction climate is significantly more than the originally approved amount. Division of Water Infrastructure has agreed to fund the anticipated increase from approximately six million dollars to approximately nine million dollars with a zero percent interest loan, and the LGC has been informed. You have support information in attachment 5D. The recommended action is that staff recommends that the board authorize the city manager and staff to finalize a task order with CDM Smith Incorporated for a not-to-exceed amount of six hundred and thirty thousand dollars in order to proceed with the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation project construction. Staff also recommends that the board adopt a revised resolution and capital project ordinance that aligns with the new funding numbers. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bullock. Any discussion?
Just a question.
Yes, sir.
With the rehabilitation or the improvements to the wastewater, I mean, the treatment plant, the water treatment plant, doesn't that mean, or could that mean, that we would get an additional two million gallons in allocation of water?
No.
It does not?
No, it does not. It does not. This deals with just some improvements to the existing treatment facility, which is wastewater, not water, and it's going to improve its functionality and update it from processes that have been there for twenty years plus. It will not give us additional water allocation. It'll approve, it will improve efficiencies at the wastewater treatment facility, but it's not going to give us additional allocation. No, sir.
So, it's not going to clean more water and provide additional water to?
There's water going out. It's not going to be coming back into the system. It'll do it more efficiently. And that's one of the reasons why we're doing it, because we had some issues down there when we had some heavier flows and some of the things that we are having to do. And this will improve that tremendously, but it's not going to give us additional capacity.
And it's important to have that because of the additional development that's going on.
That and just meeting state clean water requirements.
Okay.
But I believe.
Are we having problems meeting state clean water requirements?
No, we've had no violations. Am I correct in any? In the last year or two plus, we've not had violations.
The state has put a new mandate on the wastewater treatment plant regarding zinc. The levels of zinc have been heated with the old permit and on the new permit, they're requiring us to do additional testing and ensure that our zinc levels going out after treatment meet new criteria. In addition, our maintenance costs have been escalating steadily every year. And what we spend on maintenance, rather than fixing the underlying issue that's a problem, could cause us to exceed state criteria if we're doing it.
So, this rehabilitation project falls right in line with those issues. And then a further thing, as I understand, which the manager has brought up with us from time to time, is if we choose to allocate some money to address sewer inflow and infiltration, that will help with respect to your question about capacity because it will reduce our treating of storm water if we reduce. if we reduce the amount of stormwater that flows to the system during storm events.
Very much so.
So, so there's another way of getting at the capacity from that perspective.
Absolutely.
Excellent, uh, thank you, further questions? Then, um, I had one and I apologize that I don't, I, it wasn't clear to me. In the support information, we see that the total amount for, um, the administration and, and cost is 1.24 million. So is the 630,000 that is in this task order, is that represent an increased amount over what we had originally anticipated for those administrative costs? Or, I just wasn't sure how that matched with the 1.24 million in the support information.
If 630,000 is included in that 1.24, you know, the task order for the design and bidding of the project and as costs have escalated and we did add some additional items to the project that we discovered while we were doing the design, that has increased what was part of the original amount that we put into the application.
So this is the initial part and then will follow, come later, the co, additional cost?
1.2 is everything for in here.
Right, okay, thank you. Any other questions? All in favor of Commissioner Bullock's motion, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. With that, we're going to go, instead of doing the consent agenda, I'm gonna take us to item C, which is to consider awarding the 2022 concessionaire contract for the Oxford Park Athletic Complex. The Parks and Recreation Department accepted informal bills, bids for the exclusive license to provide concessions for Oxford Athletic Park for the 2022 athletic season. For the 2022 season, the bids were broken down into two categories, frozen dessert and savory. The bids were advertised in the Oxford Public Ledger and the Henderson Dispatch. Bids were received in the city clerk's office and were opened on Friday, February 4th, 2022 at 12:30 PM. The city received one bid from Angela and Raymond Allen for the savory category and one bid from Ryan Ball for the frozen dessert category. You have support information in attachment six C. Recommended action, staff recommends awarding the contract to Angela and Raymond Allen for the savory category and Ryan Ball for the frozen dessert category for the 2022 season and authorizing the city manager to sign the contract on behalf of the City of Oxford, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tovey, any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You know, and I ask this question all the time. I just cannot figure out why we only get one bid for projects like this or for situations like it. And, you know, and I'm not certainly saying anything about the folks that won the bid, but it's just surprising to me that we only get one bid for each thing. Is it, is there no competition? Is, is there no one else who does this? It just seems odd to me. And, and maybe it's just the way things are done.
Ms. Cheek, you walked in at the perfect time.
You're right, I mean, you asked that question.
I do.
I'd certainly love to have more bids for our concession contract, but we, in, I think there's been one year that we had two bids and since then, we haven't gotten any more than one. This year, we've broken it up into the savory and into the frozen dessert, so we actually had two people to bid, but they wouldn't probably have bid on the whole, you know, on the whole thing. Like Conna Ice doesn't wanna sell hot dogs and things like that and that's just, that's sort of not their brand and the vendor who received the, the bid for the savory portion, they basically run a concession stand, just your typical type of concession stand. So they're, they're a great option, but they would have only been the one, you know, they were the only one for that piece of, so. And we actually put this, I mean, it's on the website, we posted, we sent it to the dispatch, the Henderson Dispatch and typically one other paper, we try to post it at least twice or runs, does an ad there. We try to do word of mouth. I mean, we, you know, it's just, it, it's tough. It's tough to get anybody for those type of things. And it's, it goes every weekend, it's long days, it's, so, I mean, it's not.
It's pretty special, I asked.
Something that a lot of people are doing, I guess, now.
So in a sense, we're lucky they wanna do it?
We're, we've got vendors, so we are very happy that they want to do it.
Right.
Because it's certainly not something you wanna do, you know, with part-time staff and having to buy all that stuff and, and, you know, so you'd much rather have a vendor in there doing it. If we're fortunate that the vendors that did respond have done this and know what they're doing and will provide us a good service out there, so.
All right.
Excellent, thank you, other questions? Ms. Cheek, I'm, I'm curious, do we still have a requirement that they include healthy options in some different categories?
They have to provide their menus when they, when they bid on it and they have, both provide healthy alternatives.
Awesome, thank you very much.
And the only other, they, they have to also sell Coke from the Coke Red Truck, they call it, because we have an agreement with them for scoreboards out there. So we can receive two new scoreboards at that site and we'll receive one a year for the next year.
Okay, great.
Sell pips.
Okay.
As long as we ban tofu.
There's no tofu on it.
Thank you.
With that, all in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? That motion carries unanimously. We will go to Attorney Burnett and the discussion and then we'll circle back around to the consent agenda, the discussion about the resolution authorizing condemnation.
Yes, ma'am, as I said in my, in my opening remarks, we have a lot of watered sewer projects going on. We've identified the location of the lines. We have four properties that we haven't been able to get agreements with the owners to put the line across, so we, in order to proceed with the project, we need to begin the condemnation process. Usually before that gets too far, we, we get an agreement, but we have to do this in order to move forward with the project.
Okay, um. Colleagues, any questions for Attorney Burnett or our city engineer, Amy Ratliff?
I've got one.
Yes.
What, these, these four properties, Mr. Attorney, are they vacant properties and you can't get hold of the, the owners or?
I don't think they're, I don't think they're vacant. I think that, from what I understand, they're not vacant and we probably already have an easement across the property now because most of them are just, we're replacing the lines. And so I think there's a good argument that because we already have a line there that we actually have a right to put it there without even condemning, but the condemnation process allows us to begin work immediately upon that occurring and, uh,
I just wondered in case, you know, they, you couldn't get hold of them or they just didn't respond.
Well, sometimes that happens. It's a, you know, the, the engineering department makes every effort to contact the landowners to actually speak with them. Most of the time, we're able to get an agreement. Sometimes we'll have people that don't even respond at, at any point, but it, it, this is essential for the project to move forward.
Oh, I understand that, it, it needs to be done because we have to move forward.
How long ago was this process of trying to contact the owners started and?
I'll have to let Amy answer that, I, I don't know. I, I, I'm only involved in this part of it. I think the engineering department contacts the landowners and I, and I think it's been a right good while.
Eric has spent an enormous amount of time for the last two, three years trying to get responses from the property owners. I have been involved with some of the property owners. Some of them will not answer letters, doors, phone calls. They say they will, start a conversation and then this year, won't complete the conversation. Some of them want some monetary reimbursement for the easement which we are granted no charge by most of the residential businesses as they realize this is a replacement of an old line with a new line and it's a benefit to them, but it's going to create an overflow in their yard at some point, you know, in the future. So, you know, every event is made by, as possible, you know, whether it's in person, by email, by phone, and, you know, we just are not coming to a regular meeting.
Yeah, Mayor, I'll add that condemnation is probably the last thing that we want to do. But as you can see, the effort has been made by the city and quite frankly, some of these projects are tied to the desire to move forward with these projects because these projects extend beyond the borders of these four properties. Meaning that in order to get these things done prior to the resurfacing that is coming, we need to move forward to get this done so that those contractors can complete that work and hopefully get out of the way. So it's, it's kind of a last resort, but I will be honest with you with the number of projects that the city has ongoing and has had ongoing for the past several years, to only have four at this point, it's pretty good.
I, I fully understand, I just wanted to make sure that any public understood the reason we're doing it and that we haven't just been knocking at the door last week and didn't get it. I know it's been going on for a long time, so it needs to be done, yeah.
Absolutely, Commissioner Gilery?
For instance, Exhibit A, it has dollar amounts there, what, what does that represent? On Exhibit A, the last page?
The, the dollar amounts on the last page on Exhibit A under each of the four entities, that's what your question is, what does that apply to?
We, we pay a dollar amount per linear foot that we, uh, that we encroach on the property. I'm not, I don't, I think it's $2 per linear foot.
So, so if we're replacing it?
That's for, yeah, yes, ma'am.
So why are we paying to replace a pipe that is to benefit to anyone?
It, it's very hard to put the line exactly in the same spot that it was put in originally, so that's why we made the determination that we needed to, to compensate them in case it's on a different part of the property.
So, so this dollar amount is the amount that will be paid to each of these entities and it represents $2 per linear foot?
Yes, ma'am.
That we are traves, traversing their property?
That, that's voluntarily, if they contest that, they can go to the board and try to get more.
Right.
That's what we pay them voluntarily.
Okay, thank you. Further questions from any members of the board? Okay, then we'll entertain a motion.
The motion that we put it on, added to the agenda.
Well, it's already been added to the agenda. It is that whether we authorize the resolution to, for condemnation proceedings. So we have a motion by Commissioner Tovey, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? That motion carries unanimously. And we now circle back around to the consent agenda, which is to accept the December finance report by Finance Director Ong and approve the minutes, and it says 2021, but that should be 2022, meeting minutes for January 4th, agenda meeting and January 11th, regular meeting, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Oh, we had multiple motions, I think Commissioner Bridges, Mayor Proton, all in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed like sign? That motion carries unanimously. And with that, we have reminders to participate in the Love Local campaign, which is, takes place the entire month in downtown Oxford, which essentially means love your local merchants and support them. And if there is a contest, or any type of contest or anything like that, Ms. Bone, that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of.
It's just shop, shop local, okay? And I will also add that Julie Metz from the Leveragene C in North Carolina, she's with the lead of municipalities, is coming next week, uh, February 23rd, which is a Wednesday, to the Orpheum to speak about downtown development and her experience when she was in Goldsboro. And she will be there from 12 to 1 PM. And if you, I'm pretty sure Alyssa sent out an email to everybody and there's an opportunity to click accept on there, which lets Strongarm know because they will be providing food, so they are sponsoring this event and providing food to anybody who wishes to attend free of charge. So those of you that are in the audience, if you are interested in attending this event, you are more than welcome to, the more the merrier. And please get in touch with our office and we'll make sure you, if you don't have that ability to find it and RSVP on your own, we'll get you RSVP'd and we would look forward to having you there. So we, we hope you choose to come. And with that, Commissioner Khan, you have anything else that you would like to add?
Not at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Gilry?
No.
Commissioner Tovey?
I hate to mention how we're going on with our search for, for a police chief. And one other thing, um, I was saying, is I think many people might have seen the, um, the posts about the, the streets, Main Street, about sweeping. And I saw the mayor's reply and it was a good reply because there's no way we can sweep the streets with all the cars there and why would our, uh, street director, or our Public Works Director have people come in on a Sunday to do it, you know? It's one of those problems that I'm sure we get sorted out eventually.
Well, I think we did sort it out in that, um, I had a conversation with the owner of Main Street Fitness and our Public Works Director, Stephen Blasco, was incredibly responsive. So I would like to, to say for public record that we are sweeping the streets five days and we.
Oh, yeah, I know.
And our folks are out there early in the morning, starting at 6:00 in the morning and, um, we worked with, the owner of Main Street is going to put up a sign on Mondays asking folks to park out back or park across the street because Strongarm is closed on Mondays so that our guys can have a clean run down, um, every Monday morning to make sure that that side of the street, because she is opening at 5:00 AM and that's, that's the issue, is that she has expanded her hours, which is great for local folks. But, so that's how it's resolved.
We can always allow Steve for an answer, he's a good guy.
There you go, absolutely. Anything else, Commissioner?
No, that was just.
Okay, um, Commissioner Bridges?
Yeah, I don't have anything.
Mayor Proton?
No.
Commissioner Bullock?
Nothing.
Commissioner Lumpkins?
Not at this time.
Okay, and, uh, Mr. Thornton?
I do have something. Let's see, um, well, after a long and extensive and thorough search, assessment, interview process, I am pleased to announce that we have a new Chief of Police. Our new Chief of Police here for the City of Oxford will be Pat Ford. She is with us tonight and I'm very pleased that she has graciously accepted to serve in that capacity and I'll call on her to say anything she wishes to say. But the City of Oxford, again, is, is very pleased to announce that this evening and we look forward to many years of her service to this community and service by the Oxford Police Department to this community as well, under her leadership.
I just wanted to say I appreciate the opportunity to.
I just wanted to say I appreciate the opportunity to return after 25 years of service, to return and continue serving in Oxford as a police chief. We applaud these members of the police department and the community both. So we look forward to getting started on this, hopefully somewhere around March, but, again, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you very much. You got your answer?
I did.
How's that? Excellent. So I think, uh, it's been a hard, long wait for a lot of folks. We have a lot of faith in our manager, who takes his time and will not be rushed, so that when he makes a decision, he feels good about it. Um, I think we've been exceedingly fortunate with our Public Works Director, who would be the most recent department head hire, and so we can feel very confident, uh, in Chief Ford and, and that this decision that the manager made. But I know, um, it's been a long thought-
Yes, it has.
-process, and we appreciate it.
He's got a few more gray hairs.
Just a few, at least haven't turned loose just yet.
Ma'am, if you'd please do me a favor?
Yes, sir.
Someone left Frank Strickler a note.
Uh, he might be watching, for all we know.
No, he's not.
Left Frank Strickler a note, please, text him, email, whatever.
Yes, sir. I, I'm sure he'll find out quickly.
I guarantee it.
And Mr. Thornton, is there anything else on your list that you want to?
No, ma'am, I don't have anything that would top that tonight's.
Uh, Mr. Burnett, anything that you would like to ask?
Oh, ma'am, I'll try.
And I would just like to say thank you again to our manager, Ms. Bowen, Ms. Alyssa Blair, for, and others, and all of our department heads who did a phenomenal job. We had our retreat on, was it the 4th and the 5th? Uh, February Friday and Saturday. It was an outstanding work time together, and the department heads did an amazing job with their presentations, and we appreciate the work that you put into them, and the, um, the manner and positive attitude that you brought in making your presentations, and the, the manager as well. And then the discussion that we had as a board was, from my perspective, extremely fulfilling. And so I just want to thank everybody for your part, bringing yourselves and your brains and your thoughts and your ideas to the table, and we had a very successful time, so.
Thank you.
With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion that was Commissioner Bullock? Uh, all in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.